Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay, can everyone come to order, please? Everyone come to order and have a seat, thank you. Okay, good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals for the town of Eastchester. This is our September meeting. We have echo. Oh, is it like a reverb from one of the TVs? Okay. I think it's this. If you don't mind me pointing, it's this one. Tom's first pitch for the Yankee game. Okay. Yeah, it's coming from this television. Oh, it's that one? We okay? Yes, we are. Well done. Thank you, Mr. Conway. Well, the good part about being old is I can't hear it, so. You'll have to deal with it, Mr. Racinelli. Always count on a millennial. Thank you. Okay, so again, this is our September meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. We start our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise. Okay, I usually take this time to go over the ground rules for each meeting. They don't change, but I'll go over them for tonight's crowd. We start by just reminding everyone that we observe Robert's Rules of Parliamentary Order. For those trivia buffs, almost every government and quasi-government agency follows those rules. Essentially, what it means is that we take action based upon motion, resolution, and a vote, and members and the public will have an opportunity at some point to address the board when recognized by the chair. Also, as a reminder, we do not accept any new material correspondence after the closing of the public hearing. So, any commentary tonight is part of the public hearing and it's part of the record. Any comments to be made after that cannot be accepted. So there is no new material, emails, letters, et cetera, that become part of the public record or accepted or given any way or reviewed. Tonight, we have a, we are missing two members tonight. We have a quorum. We have one item that's been adjourned. That's application 25-22. That's 16 Greystone Circle. Won't be heard tonight. It's adjourned on consent to the next meeting, which is in October. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 10th, 2025 meeting. Is there a second? Mr. Conway, all in favor? Okay. Before I go over the protocol on how Robert's Rules affect new applications, which is essentially what everyone's here for, we have two items on for resolution tonight. So the first item is 25-33. That's 72 Lockwood Avenue. I make a motion to grant the requested variance for this application, 25-33, 72 Lockwood Avenue, for the reasons explained in the resolution prepared for the meeting and subject to the conditions listed in the resolution. Is there a second to my motion? Mr. Conway, to the vote. Mr. Conway? Mr. Weber? I vote yes. That application's been approved three, nothing. Zero. It's not a baseball game, sorry. Second application is 25-34, 155 Montgomery Avenue. Similarly, I make a motion to grant the requested variance for application 25-34. That's 155 Montgomery Avenue for the reasons explained and listed in the resolution that has been prepared for this meeting and subject to the conditions listed in the resolution. Is there a second to my motion? Mr. Conway, to the vote. Mr. Conway? Mr. Weber? I vote yes. That application's been approved three, zero. Okay, so now we're on to the new business calendar, and I'll take them in order. And what I'll do is let me call the roll first to make sure every applicant who's here is ready to proceed. So, application 25-38 Siwanoy Country Club. Ready to proceed? Okay. Application 25-35, 197 Old Willmont Road. Ready to proceed? Great. Number three, application 25-44, 62 Bromback. Ready to proceed? Okay. Application four, 25-45, 138 Park. Ready to proceed? Okay. Number five, application 25-1, 28 Central Drive. Ready to proceed? Okay. Application 25-43, Three Handfling. Are you ready to proceed? Thank you. Number seven, that's application 25-55, 99 Lawrence. Ready to proceed? Okay. Application 25-37, 367 White Plains Road. Are we ready to proceed? Okay. And the last application is 25-53, Four In Place. Are you ready to proceed? Great. Okay, so for new applications, for those who have not appeared before the board, your application, all of the exhibits, everything has been marked submitted as part of the public record. The board members, including the ones that are not here, have had an opportunity to review the materials. In some instances, they've had an opportunity to visit the site. As I mentioned to all applicants, you don't have to sit here and read the full application. As a matter of fact, it's not going to hurt your application, but it won't help. We've already seen it. I'd ask that you summarize your application, and then we allow the board members to make any, to have any questions from your application. Sometimes they'll comment. And on approved motion, we'll allow the public to be heard. The public will have an opportunity to be heard. I'll ask anyone speaking on behalf of the public to give your name and address for the record, and you'll speak at the podium. Everything needs to be registered through the mic because we have a stenographer. It takes minutes after the meeting. And if there's any commentary, I will certainly allow the applicant to reply after the public's been heard. Okay, and then on proper motion, the public hearings, as a general rule, are closed unless there's a reason to leave them open. The board will have an opportunity to ask further questions, and the applicant may or may not need to make a comment or sum up. So that's essentially how we proceed, so let's proceed. Applicant 25-38, application, that is, Siwanoy Country Club. Can you come forth, name and address for the record, and please proceed?
Good evening, Chairman Pila, members of the zoning board of appeals. I hope you're doing well this September evening. My name is Helly Pedicano. I'm an associate at Cuddy &amp; Feeder here on behalf of Siwanoy Country Club, along with members of our team, including Zach Pearson of Insight Engineering, Tony Panzav, Rogers Mechanical Architects, Kevin McGurk, who is the general manager of Siwanoy Country Club, Stephen McLoane, who's the core superintendent of the country club, and Lucia Kyokyo, who is a partner at Cuddy &amp; Feeder. We're here before you tonight regarding area variance relief for the height of proposed accessory maintenance buildings. As you're aware, Siwanoy has been a part of the Eastchester community for over 100 years, thus making it a legal non-conforming property within the R20 district. Many residents are members, and the neighborhood has grown around the club. The open space forming a key component in the development of the community. Prior to filing this application, as a quick note, Siwanoy sent its neighbors a letter with a summary of this project, and today we have not received any follow-up from that correspondence. So Siwanoy is proposing to upgrade and enhance the maintenance area, which is located at the northern portion of the approximately 115-acre premises. The purpose of this project is to move current maintenance activities indoors so that the equipment and materials are enclosed. In other words, no additional staff or changes to the existing and ongoing maintenance activities are proposed. Currently, the area is two concrete block buildings, one of which will remain and be renovated with an addition of approximately 1,500 feet. The other will be removed, along with the removal of an existing auxiliary shed and a tent on a concrete block, which will also be removed. These structures are being replaced with two new maintenance buildings, around 122 by 66 feet and 110 by 30 feet, respectively, which will actually be moved further from the abutting residences than what currently exists. And additionally, in an effort to enhance the maintenance area, Siwanoy is proposing a stormwater infiltration and management system to mitigate any runoff from impervious surfaces, as well as is proposing landscaped evergreen trees screening along the northern-eastern property lines. Our letter to this board reviews the five factors under the established balancing test for area variances, the tools, so to speak, in considering the benefit to the applicant as weighed against the detriment to the community. I know you read that letter, and I'm happy to go through those factors if it will be of interest to you. But first, I wanted to highlight a couple of important facts. First, the proposed maintenance building heights will not exceed the current maintenance building ridge height. Thus, the height requested is consistent with the current character. Additionally, the request to permit additional height for an accessory building is consistent with this board's precedent. In 2018, this board granted an area variance for the height of an accessory Gulf Services building on the premises. Second, the variance is requested for the height and height ridge of the maintenance buildings are necessary to properly fit certain equipment and equipment vehicles within these maintenance buildings. Our team can tell you a little bit more about that and those details, but for example, a sprayer vehicle is over 10 feet. The clearance needs to be at least that height to allow the vehicle to enter. And finally, the proposal utilizes pitched roofs, which while aiding to the variance, looks nice and is structurally consistent with the adjacent neighboring properties, residential district, and the existing maintenance building. We are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for your presentation. So at this time, we'll see if the board has any questions or comments. Mr. Conway?
Nice presentation. No questions.
Mr. Weber?
No questions.
I don't have anything at this time. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this application. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conway, all in favor? Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing nobody, I'll make a motion to... I'm sorry.
Before we close the public hearing, just wanted to note that this is an unlisted action under SEGRO. We're doing an uncoordinated review with the planning board. I've prepared a draft, Part Two, of the environmental assessment form, which basically checks no or small impact to all of the boxes. This is an improvement to the property by moving the maintenance activities indoors, providing the stormwater facilities, and providing landscape screening. So it would be appropriate to adopt a negative declaration as a part of any resolution that you adopt for this application.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, part of the record. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on this. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conway, all in favor? Okay, back to the board, since I'm obligated. Mr. Conway?
Still no questions or comments. Still no questions.
Yeah, I'll just say that, you know, to my satisfaction, you met the five-part test. Although not part of the five-part test, probably one of the reasons why no one's here speaking is because you had, smartly, had an outreach with the neighborhood, and you've done things to make it more neighborhood-friendly, which is part of the five-part test. And bringing equipment and maintenance indoors makes it more sightly, in my opinion, and makes it also more friendly to the neighbors, not a detriment, but actually a benefit to the community and fits in with the neighborhood. So, having said that, I'll make a motion to adjourn this application for resolution at the next meeting. Second? Mr. Conway, all in favor? Thank you. You're welcome. Okay. Application number two. This is 25-30-35, 197 Old Willmont Road. Name and address for the record, and please proceed.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Malinsky with SM Architecture Studio. I'm presenting on behalf of my clients, Michelle and Theo Artugalu. The house is located at 197 Old Willmont Road in zoning District R 7.5. We're requesting five variances to add an attached garage and to increase the curb appeal of the house. Currently, they don't have a garage, and the house lacks any sort of character, as you can see in the photos. So I felt it was necessary to add some new forms to the existing geometry of the house to create a more interesting facade, and that's kind of what created the need for these variances. As you can see on the site plan and the bottom drawings, we're requesting a front yard setback for a small extension on the left side of the house in yellow, but only the orange portion is over the required setback. This is just a small portion, and it's one-story, but I felt this added volume, added interest to the front facade, and it allows for some tall arced windows there on the front facade, as you can see in the elevation. For the side yard setback on the right side, that's for the garage addition. Again, you can see in yellow the addition, but the area that's over the setback is in orange, and it's only one and a half stories here, and this is due to the angled property line. On the left side, there's a side yard setback. It's very minimal. We're just carrying the existing house forward in the addition. There's a fourth variance for the driveway, just moving it closer to the property line. And then the fifth variance is the length of the porch. As you can see, the length of that's dictated by the aesthetic for the front facade. So overall, I think these requests are minimal, given the drastic improvement to the curb appeal and the aesthetic of the house, as you can see in the elevation compared with the existing photo. Are there any questions?
Sure. Thank you for your presentation. Let's go to the board for questions. Mr. Conway?
No questions. I just think it's very nice design. I'm familiar with the neighborhood because it's the neighborhood I live in, and certainly agree that it adds a nice curb appeal to the neighborhood. That's it.
Mr. Weber?
No questions.
And before I open this up, actually, I have a similar view of your application. It's very thorough and well reasoned, and you'll hear later on my thoughts on you meeting the test. But I did want to ask you, the driveway. It's not flush to the addition, and I'm curious, because you're going into the side yard setback, why? Why are you going into that side yard setback for those two feet?
Just, you know, so it's not further in front of the house.
Can you explain that? Maybe if you could pull that back up? Yeah.
Just so it's not going so far in front of the porch?
Yeah, if you could, sorry.
Yeah, can you do that, if you don't mind, with the microphone? I'm sorry.
Sorry, so due to this angled property line, I didn't want it coming too far in front of the house, like in front of this new porch. So that was the reason to...
So the width of the driveway is a standard. What you're saying is it's a standard width, so you can't shave it on the right side as I'm looking at it?
Correct. It's actually smaller, narrower than what's allowed by Eastchester, so it's 18 feet, whereas Eastchester permits 20 feet. So I didn't want it to extend it so far in front of the house.
That's the only clarification I was seeking. I thank you very much. Okay. So, having gone through that, let me make a motion to open the public hearing on this application. Is there a second? Mr. Conway, all in favor? Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conway, all in favor? Okay, back to the board. Mr. Conway?
Nothing further from me.
Weber?
Nothing further.
Nothing from me, except that I think you've satisfactorily answered my questions and also met the five-part test. And the only thing I have left is to make a motion to adjourn this matter for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second? Mr. Conway, all in favor? Thank you for your presentation. Okay, application number three. This is 25-44, 62 Bromback. You can name and address for the record, and please proceed.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us this evening. My name is Attorney Ron Bryan, representing the applicant. We have the owner of the property here, as well as the architect. And there is a notice of intent within your packet, but I will briefly summarize. As Mr. Conway stated, the property is located at 62 Bramback Avenue, also known as Bramback Road. We're here for a variance of the square footage. Basically, the existing gross square footage of the house is 1,499 square feet, and we're requesting approval to bring it to 2,397, 2,397 square feet, which is basically, in our opinion, more suitable for us to be able to expand the house to a three-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath house, which is consistent with the various properties along the block. There's no undue burden to the public. There's no impact on the public health, and it will actually, the improvement will increase the tax base. We will not have any change to the existing setback. We will not have any change to the side setback, nor the rear setback. This is only a request to you for a vertical expansion to allow a family with two or three children to be able to move into this home. Right now, it's too small. It's out of place. It doesn't look right. It takes away from the beauty of the neighborhood and the street because it is so small, and it is not in the best condition, and we plan to renovate it, bring it up to scale in conformance with the beauty and quality of the other homes on the street. If you have specific questions, we have the architect here, and he can go through details and numbers with you.
Yeah, just a clarification about the variances that are required. So this application will require a variance from the maximum gross floor area provision to allow 2,397 square feet, where 2,300 are permitted. Also, front and side yard setbacks. For the front yard, 30 feet is required, 21.67 feet provided. For the side, 14 feet required, 11.67 feet provided. On the first floor, these are existing, but when you put a second floor over a non-conforming setback, that exacerbates the nonconformity and requires a variance.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, just to amplify that, the structures that exist that you're building on are legal, but they're nonconforming. So that's why these setbacks are requested. Once you are altering a legal nonconforming, you have to comply with the current conforming requirements. So anyway, but thank you for having highlighted that. So, the board, any questions from the board? Mr. Conway?
I have no questions.
Weber?
No question.
I don't have anything as well. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this application. Is there a second? Mr. Conway, all in favor? Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing nobody, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second? Mr. Conway, all in favor? Okay, back to the board. Mr. Conway, anything? Weber? I think you, to my satisfaction, met the five-part test. I think, again, not to steal your presentation in thunder, but you're really building on setbacks that already exist that are just nonconforming. So we're really talking about a vertical application, and you're talking about really being in conformity with the neighborhood and certainly not a detriment. So I make a motion to adjourn this application for resolution at the October meeting. Is there a second? Mr. Conway, all in favor? Thank you for your application.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, application four. This is 25-45, 138 Park Avenue. Come forward, give name and address for the record, and please proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Louis Gilandy. I'm the project designer for this application. Our proposal here is to build a wood deck accessible on the south side of the property, and the deck will be accessible from the kitchen and the dining room. So we're here tonight just to kindly asking the board to approve the setbacks. The variances for these two setbacks. So the first one is the side yard setback, where it's required to have a six-foot minimum side yard, and we're proposing a 5.8. The second setback is the one adjoining the street, where zoning code requires 14 feet, and we're proposing 9.83 feet, therefore with, you know, a variance of 4.17 feet. The reason for these variances is due to a technical necessity. The deck will be built over the driveway, and the two retaining walls of the driveway basically will have columns sitting on top for this deck.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Okay. To the board for comments or questions. Mr. Weber?
No, I have no question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Conway. I went out of order.
I have no questions.
Mr. Weber?
I still have none.
I'm never going to confuse you two again. And I have nothing at this time. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second? Mr. Conway? All in favor? Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Second? Mr. Conway, all in favor? Okay, to the board. Mr. Conway, anything?
Still nothing from me.
Mr. Weber?
Still nothing.
Okay, and the only thing I have for you is that I, again, reviewed your submission, and to my satisfaction, answered the five-part test, including how it's going to affect the neighborhood and how it fits into the neighborhood, et cetera. So, having said that, I make a motion to adjourn your application for resolution at the October meeting. Is there a second? Mr. Conway, all in favor? Thank you for your presentation.
Great, thank you. Have a good night.
You, too.
Okay, application five, 25-51, 28 Central Avenue. Come up, name and address for the record, and please proceed.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Cordone. I'm the architect for the project of 28 Central Avenue. We are requesting for a zoning area variance for an expansion on an existing nonconforming portion of the building. The existing deck expands into the side yard setback. We rebuilt the deck last year. We rebuilt it as of right within the setback. However, we are proposing to put a pergola that would be above the deck area and would be encroaching beyond that existing nonconforming areaway. So our request would be to allow us to put the pergola up. The pergola will not expand in any nonpermeable surfaces. It is airy in nature. It is made out of the same material as the deck, and we feel that it has very low impact to the surrounding neighbors being in the backyard.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. To the board. Mr. Conway, anything?
Nothing.
Weber?
I have nothing.
I don't have anything either. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second? Mr. Conway, all in favor? Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Please, name and address and proceed.
Hi, my name is John Di Giacomo. I live at 29 Central Drive, right across the street. I just want to say, ever since those people moved in, they keep their house pristine. They have upgraded it. It is a beautiful house. Anything that beautifies the house beautifies the street, in turn, beautifies the town. I did see the pergola. It looks like a beautiful, yet they're adding another beautiful thing to the home, you know? So that's why I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation and for being part of the public hearing. Would anyone else like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one further, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second? Mr. Conway, all in favor? Okay, to the board. Mr. Conway?
Nothing from me, but other than I'll just, you know, appreciate, I always appreciate hearing from the community or neighbors about applications that are pending before us, so thank you for that.
Weber? Weber?
Nothing further.
You know, echoing what Mr. Conway said, we do this, this is, we volunteer, this is community service. And, you know, there's the old expression about the squeaky wheel getting the oil, so we generally only hear when there's a complaint. For you to take time out and come here to do that, which really bears, not on the four corners of the application, is very much appreciated. So, anyway, that's my comment. That's not part of the record, but we're not part of the holding, we'll call it, but I appreciate that. And getting back to the application, I think the applicant certainly answered the five-part test, and to my satisfaction. So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this application for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conway, all in favor? Aye. Thank you for your application. Okay, application number six. This is 25-433 Hamfling Road. Name and address for the record, and please proceed.
Hello, my name is Claire Harris. I'm representing SI Design Architects on behalf of the owners of 3 Hamfling Road. This application is for a proposed first floor and second floor addition that will require four area variances. We're proposing to relocate the garage from its existing location and move it to align with the front of the house. The side yard setback is existing and nonconforming, and it will be maintaining that alignment. In the rear, we are proposing a one-story and partial two-story addition. We were able to jog the walls in the rear left so that it will not require a variance in that location. A variance will be required for the first floor and second floor right side yard setback, but again, it's aligning with the existing foundation. We are proposing to extend the second floor over the existing first floor in the rear left, which will require a variance for the left side setback. The owners would like a front porch that is functional and welcoming to the neighborhood. While four feet is permitted to encroach into the front yard, we feel that a six-foot-deep porch would be truly functional, and it would just create a welcoming neighborhood feel. The porch length exceeds the length permitted, but again, we feel that it's architecturally appropriate for the scale and balance of the house. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Mr. Conway?
No questions or comments.
Mr. Weber?
No questions.
Before I make a motion to open the public hearing, like many of the applications tonight, is thorough, but also, the variances sought are numerically somewhat de minimis, which is part of the five-part test, and I want to point that out, not only numerically, but spatially, if you look at it on the whole lot. Anyway, I make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conway, all in favor? Aye. Would anyone like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conway, all in favor? Aye. Back to the board. Mr. Conway?
Nothing from me.
Weber?
Nothing.
And again, I think you've met, through your submission, the five-part test to my satisfaction. I've already mentioned the de minimis nature of these requests, but certainly in conformity with the neighborhood. I think, at this point, I'm ready to make a motion to adjourn this matter for resolution at the October meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conway, all in favor? Aye. Aye. I was answering for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for your application. Application number seven. This is 25-5599 Lawrence Avenue. Name and address for the record, and please proceed. We know it's not you, Mr. Meyerano.
My pocket's tight. Good evening, Board Chairman. My name is Adama Meyerano from Community Designs and Engineering, and on behalf of the applicant and owner Stephanie Beirudi, we are proposing a one-story front addition at 99 Lawrence Avenue. The project is situated in the R6 zoning district, and the applicant recently purchased the home just about a year ago. They love the home. The only thing that they don't love about it is the front entrance, which is why we're here today. So essentially, like most homes, you know, when you walk into the home, the staircase is literally right in front of you. There's no coat closet or nothing like that, so they would love to create a small little entry so that gives them some room to have a coat closet, have a little entry, and on top of that, piggybacking off of the one-story addition, they'll have a front-covered portico as well. So in doing so, basically, as you look here in the front, we are requesting three area variances, but two of them are for the front setback. So in the R6 zoning district, you're required a 30-foot setback to the dwelling. We are proposing at 26.2. And then the front portico will extend into that. You're allowed 26 feet, but we are proposing 22.7 feet. And lastly, the area variance is for impervious surface. So right now, the existing lot is nonconforming with respect to impervious surface. It's just about like 200 square feet over. We are only increasing about 20 square feet of impervious, so a very minimal increase to that, you know, aspect. But I did look into possibly trying to make it a net, you know, zero to take away 20 square feet. There just really wasn't anywhere that made sense to, you know, there's just a walkway on each side and a patio underneath the deck, so really, you know, there was no area to really be able to remove that sort of small increase to the impervious area. So in doing so, yes, not only does, you know, the front one-story addition is very minimal, but it also gives a little aesthetic appeal on top of the function and ability for the owner to have, you know, what is necessary for them in the dwelling. It does give some sort of aesthetic appeal to the house. Right now, it's sort of a flat front box sort of addition, so that, you know, one-story addition will give it some depth and give it some appeal to the neighborhood, and yes, other homes in the neighborhood do have very similar sort of conditions. They have little one-story bump outs where the entry is. And essentially, it's just, you know, the addition is almost sort of hidden, too, because the portico roof and the addition is all sort of shared as one, so it almost just looks like, you know, a portico that extends out. And again, lastly, just, you know, we did try to minimize it as much as possible, so it extends out. The addition is four feet, and the portico is only three and a half feet, so we tried to make it as minimal as possible, but still give them the function that they needed.
Meyerano, thank you for your presentation. To the board, Mr. Conway?
Nothing from me.
Weber?
Nothing.
Similar to a comment I made earlier, the variances sought are numerically very de minimis. This may be the most de minimis of all the applications, and particularly with front yard, where topography plays into it, and also, you know, when there's no sidewalks and the right of way, it makes it look even much larger. Just as a comment in terms of how it fits into the neighborhood. I make a motion at this time to open this matter to the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conway, all in favor? Aye. Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conway, all in favor? Aye. Okay, to the board. Mr. Conway, anything?
Nothing.
Weber?
No.
I reviewed your entire submission, and to me, it meets the five-part test to my satisfaction. Again, I mentioned the de minimis nature of these and certainly how it conforms to the neighborhood. So I make a motion to adjourn this application for resolution at the October meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conway, all in favor? Aye. Thank you for your application.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, application number eight. This is 25-37367 White Plains Road. Name and address for the record, and please proceed.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Steve Accinelli from Veneroso Curdo Schwarz &amp; Curdo. I'm here this evening with the property owner, also the representative for the applicant. I have the architect here with me as well, so we have a full house here this evening. Again, my name is Steve Accinelli from Veneroso Curdo Schwarz &amp; Curdo, and I wanted to start out by thanking the town, its representatives, Building Inspector Valenti and Ms. Wolfson have been very helpful working with us in preparing this application. This application, due to this nature, requires us to also go to the planning board for a special use permit and site plan approval, which is the reason why we are here before the zoning board in connection with variances that are triggered due to the classification of the proposed use as a recreational and family entertainment facility indoors. All of the activities at the site will take place indoors. There is no outdoor activity at the site whatsoever. We require, in connection with the proposed use, four setbacks. 100 feet are required on all four sides. We are deficient on all four sides. Front, we have 40.32 feet. Side, we have 22.95 feet. Opposite side, zero feet. And in the rear, 63.75 feet. The second variance that we require relates to hours of operation. We are proposing to open for business three hours earlier than the permitted 9:00 a.m. on Monday through Friday, and one hour earlier than the permitted 9:00 o'clock on Saturday and Sunday. There is no exterior work proposed at the building whatsoever. I'm sure everyone is very familiar. This building was built and has been in existence since 1959. We are making no changes to the footprint, no exterior changes whatsoever. All of the changes are interior build-out for the tenant and the proposed use. We have fixed up the exterior. We've paved the proposed parking area. We've done some other improvements to the building, so overall, the building and the property is being improved as part of this application. But other than that, there are no proposed changes to the exterior of the building. For the record, I submitted the principal points, which addressed in great detail the balancing test and the five factors. I won't go through them tonight. The board has them and I'm sure has reviewed them. I don't have any other comments. I do want to point out one thing. In the morning hours, the prior business was a dry cleaner, and they opened up at 7:00 a.m. Monday through Friday and Saturdays. So relative to those six days, in the reality, when compared to the immediately preceding use, we are in fact only asking to open up one hour earlier than the prior company opened up at the site. And these morning hours, as the board is aware from many other applications in the town, are consistent with workout facilities and the morning and evening workout routines and schedules. Okay. We, I don't have any other comments. I don't know if the board is in a position to issue a resolution on this application tonight, but I did want to put it out there as a request to the board. But other than that, I have folks here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. To the board, any questions or comments? Mr. Conway?
Nothing from me.
Weber?
No, none at all.
I don't have anything at this time. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conway, all in favor? Aye. Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Conway, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay, to the board now. Any questions or comments?
Nothing from me.
Okay, Mr. Weber?
No, none. I think it doesn't interfere with the buses or traffic or anything in the mornings, so...
No, and actually, that's an astute point, because with many of the recreation facilities involving gyms, workouts, we deal with traffic and parking, and that's not really the issue here, and as Mr. Accinelli pointed out, which is part of the application and the quality and conformity to the neighborhood, that everything is taking place indoors, and there's no need for further parking on this application. So in light of that, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this application for resolution at the October meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conway, all in favor? Aye. Thank you for your presentation. You're welcome. Have a good night. Okay, the last item on our calendar, number nine, 25-534 End Place. The applicant would like to come forward and give me your name and address for the record, and please present.
My name is John Carroll. I'm representing Mr. Hannah, and I, we're looking to apply for variances for the construction of a new second floor on an existing residence. We're not actually changing the footprint of the house at all, but we're going to be adding an overhang on the front side of the house at two feet that's about 15 feet wide, and at the rear of the house across the hall back. So on the front side of the house, because of the shape of the lot, you wind up with a front yard that doesn't comply at one corner, and that's the variance that we're looking for.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Conway?
Nothing from me. I think this is one of those matters you mentioned is numerically small.
Yeah.
Is that the right word for it?
Sure.
De minimis. De minimis, that's the words, and that, so, yeah, that's, just make that observation, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Mr. Weber?
Oh, I have nothing.
And I would make the same comment as well, that the request is de minimis, and, well, my secondary comments later on will be addressed to the five-part test. But let me make a motion to open the public hearing on this application. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conway, all in favor? Aye. Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conway, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Mr. Conway, anything on this further?
Nothing.
Weber?
No, nothing further.
Yeah, I'm, other than the fact that I think you've addressed the five-part test to my satisfaction, and in addition, Mr. Conway's point about really, like many of the applications tonight, it's statistically or numerically insignificant, well, I shouldn't say insignificant, de minimis, but also, it's in conformity with the neighborhood. It's only not going to be a detriment, and the nonconformity you're building on top of, so you're not really going into further nonconformity. So at this point, I only have, I'll make a motion to adjourn this matter for resolution at the October meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Conway, all in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, before I do our last item of business, which is to make a motion to close the public hearing, I just want to let the public know that the 2026 calendar is out, if anyone's considering applications, and that there are only a couple of meetings left on our calendar for this year, and I'll just address this as a point of order because it came up in one of the applicant's requests, and that is for a resolution this evening. That is not the policy of this board, and when applicants make an application, one of the terms and conditions on their application is that applications are not considered, and I'm sorry, are not resolved the night of the meeting that they're heard, for obvious reasons like deliberation and review. So anyway, our calendar is out, and I have nothing further to say, other than that I make a motion to adjourn our meeting to October. Is there a second?
Let's do the honors.
I'll second it.
Mr. Weber, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.